Good evening, everybody. I'm Kevin Diaz with WHCP Cambridge Community Radio. Thank you all again for being here, for tuning in and for participating. The ground rules are as follows: each candidate gets a two-minute opening statement, up to two minutes of time to respond to each question, and then a two-minute closing statement. All four candidates have been provided potential questions in advance to prepare for this forum. And now, we're going to begin by prior arrangement with Mr. Bramble, your opening statement, sir.
My qualifications, experience, and so forth, I've been in business for 50-plus years. I was county commissioner from 94 to 98. I served on the county council from 2002 to 2006. I was on the Dorchester County Board of Education from 2008 to 2020. I was on the Critical Area Commission from 2004, 2006. I'm a current associate member of MAVE, a past MAVE legislative committee member for four years from what I can remember when I served on the board. I'm incoming president of the Cambridge Lions Club, and I've been a member for over 30 years. And I'm also incoming vice president of the South Dorchester Folk Museum, and I serve as well on the Board of Trustees, of which both of those clubs, all money is raised, go back into Dorchester County. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank everyone for coming. My background: I currently own three businesses, Kramer Welding in Hurlock, Maryland. Been in business 22 years. I also own REK Firearms, which is a training facility, gun shop. We manufacture law enforcement items, different things. And I also own Cabin Creek Properties. As far as my involvement into community, I am an active member of both NECK District and Hurlock Volunteer Fire Company. I am an active member of the Midshore Dive Team and one of the local search and rescue divers for this area. I also dive for the boat races when we had them in town as a rescue diver. A few of the things I do every year: my business hosts, it's called Dorchester Top Shot for Patriot Point. It's a big fundraiser. We do for, it's a veterans retreat. Last year, we had over 300 people there and managed to generate them a little over $17,000. And I'm also the originator of the Cambridge Main Street Boat Drop as well. Myself and another gentleman own that. I'm trying to, this is my first time ever getting into politics, and I just want to approach it with a common sense approach and do away with, you know, a few things that have been going on.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Jay Newcomb, been a Dorchester County resident all my life. Matter of fact, me 62 years Thursday, so currently on the council. I've served 60 years on the council, very active in the community throughout the years. Church Creek Volunteer Fire Company for over 40 years, chief for 11 years. I used to coach the youth soccer league. I served on Dorchester County Central Committee, the election board. I was the manager of AA Phillips's that opened out for 27 years, and then opened up Old Salty Seafood, which is my crab picking operation. Also had Old Salty's Russia for 18 and a half years, and the school bus contractor for, well, I've been driving now for over 40 years. My grandfather had it, and my mother, she drove 50 years, and I continue to have the school bus contract. Just so thankful to be able to serve in the county. It's sure not the money. It's a lot of aggravation, but you feel like you do a lot of good to the community with the roads, ditches, mosquitoes. Generally, you all know that's the biggest district in the county. All the fire companies and all the ditches and over-drawn air force with mosquitoes are giving us a fit right now, but we need to spray this week, so. And I had Hodgkin's, like, 38 years. Hodgkin's non-lymphoma, so thank the Lord he's kept me here. So I just feel it's a way to give back to the community. Thank you.
I'm Don Satterfield, an Army veteran who was born here in Cambridge Hospital. I'm a Republican candidate for County Council District One. I bring years of experience to the council, having served with the county as an employee, a supervisor, a manager, and a department head. Working with the sheriff's office as chief jailer and warden, the Department of Corrections as the chief of operations and warden, Department of Public Works as the airport manager. I manage millions of dollars in grants and understand the county budget process from both sides of the council table. Having served on the county council, remember, I understand the importance of communicating and working closely with our federal, state, and local partners, working within the legislative process to obtain funds for our local projects. Having an open-door policy and communicating to the county seat, the city of Cambridge, and all of our municipalities foster a good working relationship. These relationships help to eliminate redundancy and reduce operational costs, thereby helping to save tax dollars. The same is true of our law enforcement, fire companies, school board, and Chamber of Commerce. Communication solves situations before they become unmanageable problems and save precious tax dollars. I have a strong, having a strong management team, the county manager, department heads, and senior staff promote county ideals and manage growth and preserve our tax money. I look forward to working with the citizens of District One and all of Dorchester County as your next county council member. I served in the Army as a helicopter crew chief, the Maryland Army National Guard as a military policeman for over 37 years, retiring as a command sergeant major. It's a point that only 1% of soldiers who pass through the Army make it to this command sergeant major. As I stated, I have looked forward to, and have worked in various positions, and retiring from the county. I spent several years with the American Cancer Society and jail and bail, and served as a rescue fire company president and many other local community events. Thank you.
Thank you. Please describe three ways to increase revenues for the county that you would like to implement during the next four years.
There's a great, there's a great expense in personnel turnover. Having to train and equip new employees is costly. We must create an atmosphere within the county to retain employees and department heads. We should place county-owned properties back on the tax rolls. As we currently have over two dozen properties on the books, on the council last term, we placed almost all county-owned properties back on the tax rolls. This increased our county tax revenue and also reduced the cost of spending, taxpayers' money to maintain these properties. We must review our current spending practices and spend on projects and services that we need, not those we want. This would include police, fire companies, EMS personnel and equipment, updates, 911, and our roads and our schools. We must work and communicate with our federal and state partners to assist the county with their current and future projects.
Well, first, I'd like to enable our prospective workforce and train current folks who want a job career to fill the void that currently exists in this county. Our current VOTAC needs to be utilized more by getting the students to participate more. There's a great demand for various trades in this, in this county. Job openings have and are currently available, which will attract more businesses. More businesses means more revenue. So that's how I position on that.
I agree with what Mr. Bramble said. As far as, yes, we do need more businesses. Manufacturing exclusively, coming from someone, I have looked for two more welders for over a year, and they're just nonexistent around here. So, yes. Also, channel energy on what we have to offer, not as far as the tourism side. The hunting, the fishing, the waterways, Blackwater Refuge. I mean, that appeals to a lot of people. Yeah, other than that, just, you know, businesses in manufacturing. The more taxpayers we have in this county, the more revenue that comes in. It's pretty common sense.
Yes, the school technology. I was the founder, designed one of that. That school, to me, is underutilized. There are so many people, HVAC, electrical welders, could not find nobody. There's no reason that school's not being utilized a lot more. That would help create jobs. Tourism. Everybody loves coming to Dorchester County with tourism, you know. So many people are out 50 that realize what was out in the outlined areas. The refuge, the hunting, the fishing. Another thing is we now have a lot of rentals. We need to try to get a company now to, our resources, like, sphere, working on to get the rentals from all these people that rent houses. Take that money, put it back in tourism. That's what we're so grateful for. That money should go back in tourism, not to the general budget to help promote this county. And our farmers and our watermen. They are on our seal. They are backmoed this county. We need to keep them going with the farming and the seafood industry. Another thing, it's, they holler, it's not a county problem, but it's a city problem with all the crime in Cambridge. That is deferred. So many people are here all the time. So that needs to be addressed. They holler, but that's a city problem. No, it's a Dorchester County problem too, because City Cambridge is a Dorchester County and the state of Maryland. So we need to do something with that. Thank you.
The county has received in excess of $3 million in Federal American Rescue Plan Act dollars, ARPA dollars, they call them, so far, and will soon be getting an additional distribution for a similar amount. What do you propose we spend or allocate those funds with?
So far, with the money, we, $400,000 went to the upgrade of the Bodyville, Body Brook Water System. It's been failing for so many years. We, they got several grants. Every time I put it out to bid, it would become a lot bigger project and a lot more money. So they were down to the last four, lower than $400,000, so we took that to help get that done. The next thing is, we used $1.2 million we put out for broadband in Dorchester County. With that, giving it to like three, two, three different companies, the state, federal government, they will get a $12 million match. So that's really going to help with that last mile out in the outlined areas. And also, the health department. Our health department is very bad shape. To build any renovations, replace it or something, but it's so congested in there. We really found out during COVID how bad that building was.
The American Rescue Plan funds are available in a variety of, are available to a variety of projects and must be used by 2024. I propose that we use the funds to address our failing septic systems and water systems throughout the county, specifically in District One. Expansion of the sanitary dish to serve all areas of southern part of the county would improve our water quality. We should expand our broadband service to every inch of Dorchester County. If we have learned nothing else from the pandemic, it is being able to communicate is a key to success. Our students, teachers, small and large businesses deserve our assistance in providing the best communication system available. Our law enforcement and emergency service personnel must be able to communicate during normal and certainly emergency situations. Our citizens' lives may depend on the radio, phone, or computer working. In these trying times, I hate to say, that simply must harden and improve our school security systems. Our children, teachers, and school personnel must have the ability to learn and teach and work in a safe environment. I would task the council to work to approve and use these funds for as many authorized projects as possible prior to 2024. I also believe that the health department is of great need. We're about to lose programs because the money is simply not there to support them and help our citizens. Thank you.
Needless to say, I had to do some Googling for, lack of better word, for to understand all of the criteria on the ARPA. So the federal government established actually broad criteria for this use for the ARPA funds. Expand our backfill court operations, justice programs, expand access to, access to housing, needed investments in water, as somebody's already described, sewer, broadband infrastructure. Just, that's just to name a few. Personally, I'd like to see our county roads fixed. I'd like to see more deputies assigned to every school. And I'd like to see the EMS and the mental health expanded, just as a start. But that's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
First and foremost, infrastructure. There are a lot of roads, ditches, culverts that have been in dire needs for years. Secondly, give some of the money to the local fire companies. I mean, if you ever go through a house fire, that's going to be one of the most traumatic things in your life, and you're relying on volunteers and a 20-year-old piece of equipment. I mean, them guys can use all of the help that they can absolutely get. Third, the VOTAC Center. Like what Jay said earlier, there's jobs out there, and we need to train young guys, you know, to do those jobs other than going to college. Other than that, like I said, the main thing is infrastructure and getting our roads and ditches fixed. Thank you.
Okay, while you've got the mic, we'll give you the, the next question, a first shot at it. What are your thoughts on the charter amendments that are being pursued by the Dorchester Charter Change Commission regarding transparency, including online and video access to county council meetings?
I personally think they should have it for the simple fact, I mean, face it. All of us here, eventually, if we get the job, are going to be working for the taxpayers. So, you know, why shouldn't they know what's going on, you know, from a meeting-to-meeting basis?
I'm not against the streamline, but the problem is we do not have good internet. And so, we need to get internet first in order to have the streamline. It's, City Cambridge can get it, but the people in District One, so many people, that they try to watch the Board of Education, they try to watch the city meetings. They do just not have good internet. So hopefully with this money, this $12 million, we will soon get internet out in the county to help with the internet, so we can have a good live stream. The overall charter, yes, it's, did you want that combined, both questions, not only the?
We'll take them separately. We can talk about the other one next.
I agree with the charter amendment. I have signed the petition and helped to gain other signatures. I strongly support open access to regular and special meetings of the county council. Public has a right to know what the council is approving or disapproving, and how the council spends taxpayer dollars. Citizens should have access to the same information at the same time the council has in order to participate in the process. Currently, citizens with disabilities have limited or no access to meeting materials. Citizens should demand access to the county, should encourage, and the council should encourage citizens to participate prior to any important vote that would impact the county's future. As a councilman, I would promote and encourage open access for all citizens and with our fellow council members.
My answer is really short and sweet. Totally agree in the charter amendments.
What are your thoughts on the charter question regarding the county manager position, which is being pursued by the Dorchester Charter Change Commission?
I totally agree on the charter amendments. However, I would like to say, and I understand from powers to be, that it wouldn't work if you could have, we'll say, all five board members to have to agree, and if not, if that wouldn't happen, maybe four. But let's face it, three members of the board can run the whole gala. By the books, that's all it takes, is three. So, so again, I'll go back to the other. Talking to the ones that started this here, I totally agree with the charter.
I also agree with the charter amendments. Yeah, it should be monitored by the county council, and I mean, other than that, as long as the person is local and has the county's interests at best, I don't have an issue with it.
Although I have a bet, I wish they'd come to the council. Somebody has a problem, seem like it's like a personal agenda with some of these things. They should come before the council, and we could explain. They do not know everything about that charter. It's a personal agenda. I'm sorry to say, but that's the way it is. We have been open meetings. All the meetings are open. We send out agendas. Anybody call, we'll copy the stuff. We send it to them. It's, it's free information, anybody, other than personnel. So, maybe shaking their head, but it is all open meetings, so. And I'd say, we have just wished they'd come, didn't have a speed cast, would go see Mr. Tommy Marweather. He knows the charter. The charter's been here now for 20 years. So, we need some little bit changes, but I think should be to set a committee to sit down and review it versus just try to get a petition up. To me, that's not the way to have good working government. We should work as a team, not against each other.
Once again, I agree with the charter amendment. I have signed the petition, and I've helped gain other signatures. The county manager position should be filled immediately with the best, the brightest, and the most qualified person. The manager should have the responsibility of the day-to-day operations of the county and authority to manage all department heads and personnel issues. Once a review has been completed of any personnel issues, then the council should be advised by the county manager. The county personnel handbook outlines the procedures to include timelines and actions to be taken on all personnel grievances and issues. The handbook is passed due a complete review and to ensure the county meets all legal and employment requirements.
What do you think is the cause of the large and unusual turnover in department heads in the county in recent years, and how would you address it?
Dorchester County has lost some of the best and brightest to other counties and jobs. If you conduct a review of the people we have lost, and I have, they are very successful in their new job with other, with many receiving promotions and pay raises in other locations and other counties. Not all of our resignations were about salaries. They were about supervision, management, and leadership, or in some cases, the lack of. Our high termination rate was not about performance of duties, but about personalities and demands placed on them. A full-time, highly qualified county manager should have the responsibility to manage department personnel matters and report to the council with personal recommendations. I truly believe that department heads should no longer work at the pleasure of the county council and take personnel, would take personal feelings out of the situation.
Okay.
Salaries are part of this, but I also believe wholeheartedly that micromanagement is playing a major role in this county. My sources tell me that, um, four years ago, to date, all department heads have been gone, replaced, however you want to call it. So, that being said, you've asked a question, how do you plan to address this if elected? You let the county manager do his or her job. Their job is the day-to-day operations, not the boards. And they oversee all of the department heads. And any questions that arise, you report that to the board. That's how I feel about it.
Very good. I personally think that we need to let the department heads do their job. Yes, we do need a county manager, obviously, to oversee the apartment heads. And the county managers, if there's any issues, concerns, whatever the scenario might be, comes to the council with them. I mean, it's the same thing. It's all pretty simple business, but I don't know. Just, like I said, let the people we hire do their jobs.
Yes, Claire, we have lost a lot of departments, a lot of employees. A lot have gone for more money, and we had a very older, many-year service of employees. We've lost, I mean, I'm not going to mention names because this is all personnel. We've lost a lot of good employees, but after COVID, they got years of service in, they decided to move on or relocate to other locations. All of them, very few terminated by the council, only two or three. A lot of them left on their own behalf. No, where you all get your information, but personnel really shouldn't be talked about, but anybody can tell you their side of the story. But all of this is not true, as far as a lot of left. Our biggest thing is money. We've got so many openings now, we cannot fill the jobs. We've got paramedics, we've got dispatchers, we've got highway people. We had a job fair three days, about three weeks ago. We had neither person walk in a room to fill out an application, not a single soul beside county employees. So it's, it's not the micromanaging, county manager, they run the department heads. They all, it comes back to us. But it just seems funny, years ago, one of the previous boards, seemed like everything was three to two vote, three to two vote. It was not an issue. But now it's an all of an issue, but it's not always three to two vote. We've done some research. There were more three to two votes in previous council than it has been with this council.
Please describe your understanding of the current state of our Emergency Medical Services Division and what you would like to see change, if anything.
Mr. Dozier, she is a great employee. She has so much knowledge. She's, she works so much training. She teaches all out throughout the state of Maryland. She has so many years' experience. But the problem is pay. We do not, we've been trying to get the salaries up on our paramedics. And another thing, this hospital relocating, most of our transporters now have to go to East and or Salisbury. If you listen to that radio, it's burning our paramedics out. They're going on a call instead of a half-hour, 45-minute call. It's two and three hours. They sit over to the hospital, wait to get unloaded, sometimes hour and a half, just to find a bid for the patient. Our people are just getting burnt out in our salaries. Talbot County now, they have gone with a better retirement and the salaries. We can, no, we try to get them up. We can't compete with Queen Anne and Caroline and these other counties. They have so much more tax revenue. You know, we have so much land, but ours is farming and marshland and the refuge. We don't get a whole lot of tax money. We get our money two ways: tax revenue and income tax. And our, our income tax is not that great in this county compared to Talbot County. And our tax base is not like Talbot County. So our revenue is job to find and keep good workers. We had some paramedics leave. They seen it was better, the grass was green, but he came back. So it's, it's not always the pay, but it is a big player in this, and retirement. I think Talbot County is going to go to a 25-year retirement like the police. So that's going to be another downfall trying to keep staff here.
The current Emergency Services Department is on life support. Luckily, we still have a few outstanding employees holding down the fort, and as they are burning out fast and with so many openings. When a person goes to work and they're working 18 and 20 hours, it doesn't take long before, especially in emergency circumstances, where they're just beat. We need a full-time department head on the ground every day. We continue to lose highly skilled personnel to other counties, and it is not all about salaries, but rather supervision and management. There has been no exit interviews with anyone leaving EMS, 911, or the medical units. How can we possibly improve working conditions if no one is willing to ask why people are leaving? I will recommend a complete review of the Emergency Medical Services Department in an effort to understand the exact problems and make immediate changes if necessary. The citizens of Dorchester County deserve the best emergency response and services possible.
There are, they are there for the county, as all of us should know, in, in time of need for anyone and for everyone. Let them do their job as they were hard for them. Any problem, I'm going to go back to it again. Go to the county manager. That, that's his or her job. You don't go to the board or board members. They should have that, make that decision and contact, if there's any questions, again, the county manager, which is there supposed to be all during working hours and after hours as well. Thank you.
I personally know quite a few paramedics in this county, and yes, they are, they are burned out. They need, they need help. They need a better retirement, and we, we need more of them. Losing the hospital in Cambridge was a slap in her face that, as Jay said, has increased the transport times tremendously. It's making them work over and everything else. And yeah, it needs to start with paychecks and incentives and go from there.
The county council recently voted on pay increases for the sheriff department staff, but excluded the deputies that guard the courthouse. What are your thoughts on that decision?
They should have gotten a raise along with everyone else.
Everyone did get a raise. All the deputies, all county employees got a raise, but we put them, says, on the on-road deputies are right now. We have no openings on deputy. Thank goodness they're all filled, but we all have a shortage of paramedics and dispatchers. So we try to get all those salaries up for the online. But everyone in the county did get a significant raise. We've adjusted the deputies and a lot of other shortfall of our departments.
The budget process has worked for years with department heads making recommendations to the county finance officer and the county council for pay raises. Now, for the past three years, individual employees have been singled out for a pay raise with others receiving very little or nothing. In the case of the deputy sheriff, is a deputy sheriff. Regardless of their assignment, a deputy must complete the same training, weapons qualification, in-service training, as mandated by the Police and Correctional Training Commission. This type of decision places stress on the employees and the supervisors and creates an inconsistent message as to the value of personnel. I do not approve of such actions for any department.
Obviously, I also disagree with that action. I know a lot of deputies in law enforcement and all agencies around this county. And all, all deputies are available in time of need, regardless of where the sheriff posts those folks. That includes the SROs. That's in our school system as well. Any and all deputies have the same training and capable of performing that. So to me, that's discrimination by holding back their salary as well. It should go by seniority and rank and so forth, the way, way it used to be. Thank you.
Kevin, how do you see yourself as a defender of property rights? And how does that relate to things like renewable energy, title rise, rails to trails, et cetera?
I agree that property owners are entitled to those rights. However, the zoning codes, you need to abide by, including the HOA guidelines as well. One needs to review the property before they purchase. One needs to review the property before they purchase it and review all codes. I might add, stay on top of all the zoning changes that are passed by the city, county, state, and federal. I had the privilege to sit on the Critical Areas Commission, 2004, 2006, I believe were the dates. And they pretty much regulate what the state of Maryland is going to do, and most particularly, it seemed like Dorchester County. And what you, what and where you can build and how far back and so forth, which is all passed down to our county zoning department. So that would, that would be my thoughts on that.
I think we need to ease up on the building permit process. From someone who's directly involved in construction, planning and zoning is probably one of the most hated organizations in Dorchester County when it comes to contractors. Other than that, I mean, it's your property. Let them do what they want. Yes, there has to be regulations and guidelines, but it should not take the time consuming, the money, or the process just because you want to do a renovation on something you own.
Fair enough.
Yes, the planning zoning, but it's not always the planning zoning. The health department is the one that holds up most applications more than anything else. The health department, all the agencies have to sign off, critical areas. Glenn, you served on the board. I know people have lots, especially the next district that had them years ago. Now they can't build on them because the laws have changed over the years, and they haven't kept up with the regulations, and they should have started permitting or done something. So it is, it's not always the county. I mean, the state, we have so many state mandates, the sprinkler system. It's good for liking the city, but people out of county, I mean, like El Rey de Far House, a quarter million dollars to put sprinkler system in their, that they're building or building. So it's a lot of restriction that is not state, I mean, not county. It's state, state unfunded mandates.
I also served on the Maryland, just Chesapeake Bay Critical Areas Commission last term. I don't see an easy answer for this, in all honesty. I believe property owners should have the right to decide what they, what is best for their property within the zoning laws and regulations. All property should be, all property issues should be handled on a case-by-case basis with similar issues of the same for each person. Don't do one thing for one person and something else different for the next-door neighbor. Consistency is the most important piece of this. Planning and zoning has a responsibility for approving permits and should do so in a timely manner. Growth should be managed to the, to move the county forward. I also understand that the health department does play a part in this. There are other agencies. But if we take the time to negotiate and talk and have an open forum with these other agencies, we can work out these differences in time lapse. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. What, what is your understanding of affordable workforce housing? And would you support additional development and tax incentives for the creation and/or redevelopment of affordable workforce housing?
Thank you. First off, we don't want to confuse affordable housing, workforce housing, with low-income housing. It is much different. There are many benefits to having adequate affordable housing for our working families located in the community. Workforce housing allows critical community workers and emergency responders to live in the same communities in which they work. Nurses, police officers, fire personnel, and teachers would be an example. Beginning salary for these people are lower. They cannot afford to be involved in buying expensive homes. So there has to be an offset that we must work on. I understand we have an issue with affordable housing here, and Dorchester and I support a review of housing issues and incentives to make it better for the young people to be able to work and live and pay taxes in our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
With the rising cost of building supplies and cost of new homes, including rentals as well, helping on the permits required could help. The county doesn't have, in my opinion, the funds to do otherwise. Currently, there are such being built right around the county. In my opinion, that's a, that's a private and it's a state issue, not the county. If the county can help to intervene in terms of, of having builders or developers, I should say, access to, to do some low-interest money, that's one thing, but not be responsible for that, that part. I was looking at Dorchester County on the median income rates number 18 in the state of Maryland. So it's kind of surprising when I look, while Comico County is actually a little lower than us. But when you look at Worcester County, it's, it's, it's way up there. Of course, Somerset's at, you know, at pretty much at the bottom, unfortunately, as well. So that's something there that it's been, and when you go looking at cost of houses out here, I still am semi-retarded. I still do a lot of designing, drawing plans and so forth, and though I'm not advertising for that. But I can tell you right now what the cost of materials are, and finding someone to build it is, is not just a problem in this county. It's all over. Thank you.
Thank you. I think as far as the county's involvement, we shouldn't be. I mean, yes, we could give them a tax incentive. I mean, I get it, things are expensive, but that's, you know, life. Everything's expensive nowadays. Yes, we could offer them like a tax incentive if they wanted to work here as long as they were employed. Other than that, that's something I personally think the county needs to stay away from. Thanks.
As far as the housing, we do try to put lots we get from tax sale to back to Habitat, Habitat for Humanity. They take the lots, build some nice houses to help people get started at a decent price. As far as the subsidized housing, we have enough of that in this county. Because along with it, it brings lower test scores and the crime, and we do not need all that. We need, our schools are, test scores are not very good. We're almost at the bottom on test scores in this county. So we need to address the school situation, watch what comes here. But we do waive the tax incentive for the sprinkler system and impact fees to try to help, give you a little incentive to help build a house in our county.
What long-term solutions do you see to better protect Dorchester County and surrounding areas from the increased threat of climate change and flooding?
We just finished a couple of studies far as for Hope's Island and down for the next district that the, you know, the sea rise is rising. So now, once we've got the study done, everybody wants a study, but they both have been done. So hopefully, you could get some federal and state money to help save those areas. Because if you see the, they are really being flooded more often than, than ever before. The watermen, the farmers, that's something we need to save, and so we, we only have so much farmland. And once this farmland is used up, where are people going to get their food to eat? So we need to, and the watermen, they want to make all these restrictions on the watermen. So their main thing is watermen or farmers and their land to protect what we have.
I support any and all assistance from our federal and state agencies to provide Dorchester with scientific information and current recommendations to address these issues. That means we must have a better relationship with those agencies. We must communicate better with federal, state representatives for assistance in this area. Blackwater Wildlife has been working to address many of these issues, and we should be working closely with them. It is vitally important to address these issues and the impact they will have on our waterman and farming community and the citizens in general of Dorchester County in the future.
To be forthright, it's beyond our control, other than requiring new home construction and additions to continue the elevation heights and setbacks set forth by, might add, the county, state, and federal government, or so the state and federal governments. I was born and raised in the lower, lower part of the county, Bishop's Head. The only way I could go, other than maybe five miles farther, was get in a boat and go over to Bloomswood Island. So Bishop's Head is actually the farthest you can go in Dorchester County. And growing up there, I have seen myself, in my 73 years, that your Lord give me on this earth the change. As far as what we can do on the climate, I don't necessarily want to go there tonight, other than we do our, our very best in, in terms of the building parts and advise people. But if it's their property and they want to take the risk onto it, as long as they have the height there, that's up to them. So, thank you.
Ease up on the process as far as what it takes to preserve your own shoreline. As far as if they want to riprap it, if they want to put a bop kit in or whatever, let them, you know, let them do it. They're preserving their land. Also, reach out to the state and the feds on some key areas. Get some water breaks put in to prevent it from going any farther. I mean, that's about it. Like Glenn said, there's nothing we can do about climate change. We live on a peninsula. It's just something we're all going to have to deal with.
Fair enough. Thank you. And you get the, the next question first? Which is, how do you plan, if elected, to involve residents in the decision-making process of our county?
Fairly simple. General communication. I mean, have discussion forums, televise it. And I mean, heck, everyone with communications technology these days between cell phones, internet, email, et cetera. It should not be any issue to get hold of any of us as far as their concerns.
Thank you very much.
Yes, our agenda, once it's approved by the county manager, it goes out to all the constituents that wants to be on the mailing list. All you have to do is contact the office and they will send it out to you when it goes out. Every, I think it's on Monday morning after 10 o'clock, after she finalized, it goes out. If there's anything that you have an interest to, you want to see, we give us information. The council members, if it's something, I've called a lot of people, realize, let them know this is on the agenda. You may want to send some of your people, your friends or whatever, know this may address your area, your community. So we just need to be, but we're open. I mean, we had every meeting. We, our office was open for every meeting, all the way through even COVID. It was open. A lot of people called my phone. The phone was not a good system, but it did help give people a little bit of information. But say, it's been open and the agenda is open to anybody that's interested in, at our meetings. We let people get involved. A lot of counties do not let the public get involved during council meetings. If you have something, a question or concern before a meeting, then we let you get involved.
Thank you, Mr. New.
Open access to all county information in meeting is a key to involving citizens in our government. Providing meeting information on all available media is the responsibility of, in this case, the council's office. County council, last term, you received a USB on Friday morning for your Tuesday night meeting or a few days in advance of any special meeting. At the same time that USB is given out to council members, the public should be informed of what's involved in the next meeting. And they should have access so that they have the same ability to participate and ask questions as we have. So that you can reach out to the people who work in those fields for a living to determine whether a vote on Tuesday night or at a special meeting would impact them if you voted yes or no. It's important to know those things. They do that for a living. I don't believe that any person elected at any level, once they raise their hand and take an oath, becomes all-knowing. Information has to be shared and asked. All citizens have the right to participate in their government if they choose to do so, and I encourage all to do just that.
Thank you, Mr. New.
My answer is very simple. Any decision made by the county that involves their property, livelihoods, and families should be posted and an open meeting for questions and answers before the vote is cast. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Mr. Bramble. Since you were so short and sweet, we'll give you the first question next. You're still up. The spotlight's still on you. Describe three key issues you are addressing in your campaign and why they are important to this community.
Well, I actually have more than three, but
The top three.
The top three are obviously school safety. And capital goes along with school safe, school safety. It comes to capital improvements. Definitely the sheriff's department and the EMS. But I'm going to throw number four in there regardless, because I think I've still got some time here. And that is, again, the Dorchester County Highway Department and fire companies. Thank you.
Okay, first and foremost, fire, EMS, and the sheriff's office. We need more paramedics. We need more sheriff's deputies. The fire companies need help. Second, building permits. There's a lot of people who want to do a lot of stuff in this county and just are deterred because of the whole process, because of what planning and zoning puts them through. Another one, there's a lot of, in the past, big construction going on around here. Hire local contractors. There's a ton of talent in this town. Take advantage of it. Another thing, hire local vendors. You know, don't outsource it. I personally was at a Board of Appeals meeting a while back. I have no idea who their attorney is or the one that we hired, but it was a total embarrassment to us. To me, that's unacceptable. The county can do better. That's it.
Jobs and tourism, and yes, Mr. Kramer, it's, you talk about the attorney, we put RP, and he put RP. And we don't have a lot of attorneys who wants to tackle that in this county, unfortunately. They, you know, we don't have a lot of legal base. They had to get one from out of county. But that's through the planning zoning. The schools, yes, Glenn, we should try to protect our students. I mean, what happened last weekend, I just hope it never, ever happens to us, so. But tourism, jobs, and the quality of life that so many people come to this county for, we must also protect our, this, the planning zoning, since the last couple of years, you wouldn't believe how many people have just went out and built and additions without permit, just done it on their own. So it's, so they are busy just trying to get people to be in compliance.
There are currently many issues facing the county. School issues. The new programs and things that are going to be required of our schools and the money that it's going to cost the county. With about a $78 million budget for the county, at present, about $22 million of it goes right out to the school boards. And the county council, unfortunately, has no authority or have the ability to make any changes in that money once it's given to the school board. I see the, the need for a full-time county manager to run the day-to-day operations. A manager, once again, should have authority over department heads to deal with personnel issues. That's, that's a big thing. Turnover of personnel. A deputy sheriff who leaves the county with all of his knowledge of the roads and the conditions, responding to incidents of certain people and certain situations, and you lose that talent, and you're starting over with a brand-new deputy who responds to a house in a domestic and has no idea what he's about to deal with until he gets there. Heaven forbid that you would be the same person responding and not knowing what you're getting into. In this day and time, it is difficult to keep talent and train them to understand the nuances of our county. The distances that you must travel from Elias Island to Hudson. That alone would be a difficult timeframe to respond to an emergency. We need more deputies to be able to do that. Better communications with our federal, state partners and representative and our local municipalities. The need for a monthly meeting with the Board of Education and the Chamber of Commerce in the city of Cambridge would help us to be successful.
To this, describe the ideal working relationship between the county school board and the county council. What do you believe would result from that working relationship?
Truth is, the previous council met with the school board once a month to discuss issues that related to the schools. Through these meetings, we worked out small things that were of benefit to the school board and the county. This provided both parties with the open door access more than just once a year at budget time. I strongly support meetings with the school board. I strongly support school security. And our students and teachers deserve a safe place to learn and teach.
When I was serving on the school board, we actually had monthly meetings with two members of the board and, and two members of the county council. We did keep each other advised of our concerns and ways to work together to thus develop in a stronger bond and motivation for staying focused towards common communication development. Unfortunately, we had one county council person always present. But a lot of times there, we didn't have the second one. And it was all, pretty much, it was always the same two. And they were, they did an excellent job. So it would have, it would have been nice if we had it. But we did do a lot of soul searching, for lack of better words, and explain each one. The county, we're talking about this county, county school board budget. As I said earlier, the county makes up one-third of the school board's budgets. Another third from the state and the other third from the federal. But the school board itself, I know this member for 12 years, all we do is set policy and do the budget. And I can tell you in the last And I can tell you in the last three years or maybe more, I can't remember now, myself and Phil Rice sat on the finance committee. And we had, we had to buy, buy our budget and do our best to keep all the, the staff and teachers and books and everything else in line. And, uh, that, that helped a lot. And we worked real well at, at that time, with, with the county council, uh, members, at least with some of them anyway. So I, that's the way it should be. COVID kinda interfered all, all that in the last year. Thank you.
Let the department heads do their job. I mean, they were hard to do it. Let it do it. And, you know, simple, once a month, report to the county council, any concerns, what needs to be improved. And we'll handle it on a case-by-case basis.
Current council still has a policy in effect, two board members, two council members to have monthly meetings. For the last several months, the school board has council meetings. At the last date, they've said, uh, we have something else or whatever. For some reason, they have not had, I think, the last, at least two, maybe three monthly meetings. So it's a school board, it's back in their field, you know, we still got them scheduled. You go in our office, you see it up on the board. It's got the date, it's all preset. So it's that, the city council. We've been trying to settle a meeting with the city of Cambridge. I know they've had a lot of issues and then with the, uh, uh, the new manager. But we're waiting for to get a meeting with the city. And, uh, they also meet with Tana Hurlock and any other township. But they are on schedule, but it just hasn't become reality.
How important do you feel it is to have a strong working relationship with state and federal legislators and their staffs? And why?
Well, that's, as y'all know, it's where a lot of money comes from, federal, state, it's handed down. So we have very good working relationship with all the federal and state delegation. I am sad to say that Miss, uh, Melissa Kelly, she's gonna be moving on. She's taking another job. She was great for Dorchester County. So she's being promoted. You know, we have, we're federal with, uh, Mr. Harris and all. They sent a representative, they set our meeting. So they're very much involved. We, we're very thankful to have a good work relationship with the federal. And they have gotten a lot of money and, and programs down through Dorchester County.
I believe a strong relationship with the state and federal partners is vitally important. Having access to legislative bills that impact our way of life is a must. To support the ones that we help, that will help us and to defeat the ones that make life difficult. This is especially true of our watermen and farmers. Currently, we have no or very little working relationship with our federal, state and local municipalities. If you have a conversation with people from the state, they will tell you it is difficult to reach out to get anyone to respond from Dorchester County. That's what I've been told. Currently, these are the agencies that people are, that assist us with funding for our many county projects. If we fail to communicate with these agencies, we miss out on funding opportunities that will most likely go to other counties and municipalities.
I believe like, uh, most people would, would, uh, would feel it, it is vital. There's no question about it with, with mandate and regular communications and, and meetings. The county needs to be made abreast of the bills that's introduced and how it may affect our county. When I say our county, I'm talking about watermen, farmers, every business that it is there. And particularly we're watermen and farmers. So, and the only way you can do that is communication. And I, and I learned that long, long time ago. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I also agree that we should have direct involvement with them, but it also is contingent on nurse sincerity. Don't show up just because you wanna shake hands, kiss babies, get a vote and never to be seen and heard from again. I personally know Andy. Andy's, uh, my opinion, did a phenomenal job for this county. And, um, as Glenn said earlier, yes, there's a lot of things that have been going on with the agriculture, with the waterman community around here, that a lot of people in the county don't know about. And yeah, we do need to stay informed.
I think we'll segue into, there's a question about how the council should be interacting with and supporting county municipalities. Obviously, Cambridge is a big county municipality. Can you talk a little bit about the county's relationship to the city? Some of you talked about revenue sources. Obviously, the, the city is a, is a revenue generator for this, uh, this county. How should the county be approaching, working better with the city?
We need to get control of the crime in Cambridge. That is a county problem. That's not a Cambridge problem. Cambridge does need the mayor. Instead of just their council, you know, running things at the moment. Yes, I think we should be working directly with them to improve everything as a whole.
As I said, we had put out the, uh, response to the city and they said they're gonna get a couple of council members to meet with us. So we have an open line, but they have not actually set it up a definite date and time. But we're, we're sitting here waiting, so we're at their mercy.
Having an open door policy and being available is the key to addressing issues for municipalities. Once we are talking to one another, we understand the needs, then come up with a plan to address those needs. This will reduce redundancy and reduce the spending of taxpayers' funds for everyone involved. We cannot just meet once a year at budget time. Simply put, if we aren't talking, we are not accomplishing much of anything.
If my memory serves me correct, in the last term that I served, which, uh, again, 2002, 2006, there, there was some problems, there's no question about that, of, of then getting the, the city to, uh, and, and the county as well as all the Church Creek and all the municipalities, small, large or whatever to meet. Sometimes you gotta bring the, uh, the olive branch. You might sometimes have to bring the whole olive tree, uh, there. But you can't just stop there because you've got to have, you can't just necessarily be your, your separate entity. It's just like being elected to first district or whatever district that other folks are running for. You're elected by that, but you serve the county. And as far as the, the municipalities, Cambridge and all, we're all part of this county. If we don't work together, then we can't move ahead. So, so if you've got some problems there or we got, there's personnel problems or whatever, you gotta put that off to the side and you gotta, you gotta go talk to them. And I believe in the last term that I served, that we did a pretty good job. I imagine some of us had to, had to grit or whine our teeth a little bit, but we still carried on. Because you gotta look for the betterment of the county, not for your own personal, uh, benefit. Thank you.
Please describe your understanding of the role of parks and recreation and the impact on residents in the county.
I'm right across, uh, my office right across from the county pool. So I don't see much activity in the wintertime, but I'm starting to see a lot of activity now. And most time I go, go home by, by way of 16 and by ballpark. So I, I see activity there as well. Every once in a while, when I go, uh, up in Hurlock area, I, I see there as well. So my, my thoughts are on that is, uh, that, uh, we've, uh, we, uh, they provide, uh, even more or we need to provide even more indoor and outdoor activities for the county residents. It's very, it's a very important function for the youth, especially in today's climate. And you folks ought to know what I'm talking about on that. So we've, we've got to find a place for the, for these young folks to, to get out along the other ones there and have a good time and take their mind off of some other things that they shouldn't be doing, for lack of better word. So that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you.
I also agree that it's a great thing. Um, kids need stuff to do. I mean, a lot of us played sports when we were younger. It teaches them discipline. It, you know, teaches several things. Yeah, let them burn off the energy. And as Bob said, I think we need to do some stuff more in the wintertime to find, you know, other involvement. That way, they're not freezing out on the ball field. Thanks.
Yes. The Dorchester County Pool now is going through some renovations. We're spending several thousand dollars to the pool. Had some major repairs had to be done. Uh, we're making a lot of repairs there. We bought the, uh, the old racket club. It's been a big help to the people in the community. Been a good joint venture with the Boys and Girls Club. It's been very, very active. A lot of the school buses drop them off right there. So it's, don't give them a chance to get on, on the street and misbehave. It's a good program. We're doing some renovation there cuz it needed some upgrading. And the, uh, like Glenn says, the Chrysler Ballpark, that's used. I mean, all the fields are used. And where that's, it may be blacktop, they'll park a lot. We just put cross pipes in, so we're updating that. So there's a lot of money being put into park and recreation.
Parks and Recreation plays a vital role in the overall health and well-being of our county citizens. The youth programs teach teamwork, self-confidence and community involvement. Programs for our senior citizens promoting a better life and activities to improve their health. I know members of the school, the Board of Park and Recreation have worked extremely hard over the years to offer programs for our citizens. I support the Parks and Recreation efforts to improve the lives of all of our citizens. We must continue to improve the ability for people to live, work and play in Dorchester County and be happy. There are issues that we will face that are very difficult. But this is an avenue with the parks and recreations that certainly could add to the pleasures that we have, that we experience and that we deserve. Thank you.
The question is, is this, please tell us about your background, experience, involvement in the community and what knowledge and strengths you would bring to the county council.
I've lived on Tates Bank Road with my wife Ruthie for the past 35 years with our four dogs and two cats, all rescues. Quite frankly, we rescued the animals and Ruthie rescued me. I served in the army as a helicopter crew chief and the Maryland National Guard as a military policeman for a total of 37 years, retiring as a command sergeant major. I talked about this early, 1% of soldiers reach CSM. As I stated, uh, in my opening remarks, I bring a great deal of county experience to the council, having served the county in various positions and retiring as a warden of the detention center. I worked several years with the American Cancer Society and the jail bail program. I currently work part-time for the Dorchester County Sheriff's Office as a civil process server. I am an exempt member of Rescue Fire Company, having served 20 years and held the position of president. I served on the Chesapeake Bay Critical Areas Commission. I have served on the Board of Directors for the Dorchester Emergency Medical, Emergency Services and as chairman. Served on Legit, which is a local government insurance trust board. I currently serve on the Board of Trustees for Delmarva Community Service. I'm a life member of the VFW and American Legion, and I'm a member of the Cambridge Moose and Elks Lodge. I have served my country, my state, my county and my community. And I enjoy, and I enjoy doing so. I look forward to continuing service as your next county councilman of District One.
I believe, being in business for 50-plus years, meeting folks from, not only from this county, but all over the state and a lot out of the state in, in my contracting business. Managing, again, president, CEO, doing the taxes, payroll, so forth. Understand the workforce. Believe being a county commissioner from 94 to 98, which was the start. County Council, again, 2002, 2006. Dorchester County Board of Education for 12 years, which we have term limits. And I will say, I think all elected offices should have term limits. I've said this many times, but this gives me the opportunity here. That being said, Critical Area Commission, which is very critical, may associate member, still am. They invited me to stay on that. So it keeps me abreast on all, everything that's affecting the schools. And again, Lions Club, 30-plus years, giving back to the community, uh, South Dorchester Folk Museum, uh, giving back to the community. The list goes on and on. I've, I've served this county and, and the community the best, the best that I can and will continue to, as long as the good Lord gives me the strength. Thank you.
I just realized that I am the only one here who has not had this job yet. So, um, I'm going to basically approach it with a business standpoint, you know, and just use common sense. I wanna reiterate on the, my opening statement as far as my involvement with the community, community with fire, with EMS. Obviously, being a rescue diver, one of the local rescue divers, I hope nobody in this room ever needs me. Other than that, I'm, if I do get the job, I'm going to go after it like I do any other thing that I've ever pursued in my life, and we'll see what happens.
Yes. As everyone knows, the last couple years have been very challenging with the COVID and with employees, the public, quarantine, shortage of employees and sickness. And with the Board of Education, as Glenn well knows, that means of effort. We give them that money. Kerwin, that's still up in Annapolis. That's gonna be handed down to us. And it could be a nightmare what it's gonna cost this county. Where the money's gonna come from? The state don't know, but they're giving us more of those unfunded mandates. Our highway user fund, they cut that out years ago. They give us a few more thousand this year. But now to Blacktop Road in Dorchester County is a minimum of $160,000 to $175,000 per mile. So that's why you don't, we only get a few miles of blacktop every year. There was a lot of money we got to help with the businesses. There was a lot of grants, a lot of things to help the county. Every volunteer fire company, uh, we gave them $25,000 due to they could not, lack of having fundraisers. So each one got additional 25,000 over the above appropriations. Some of the board members and I went around in all these little churches. They could not have their, uh, Sunday service. We had like 40-some churches that got $5,000 apiece to at least help pay their charge and their electric bill to get through the COVID. So that was another quarter million dollars. So it's, uh, you talk about the state, Secretary Holt, he calls me. He's the one who's county project. He calls me on his cell phone, uh, treasurer controller friend show. And just Friday at 6 o'clock, MBE called me over the issue we got down at Madison. So I don't know where to say it, but the state don't get hold of people. They call all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newcomb. That was our last question. That concludes our questions. And I, I understand that some of you approached this last question about background and experience as basically a closing statement. But if any of you would like to add a, a closing statement, uh, you're all allotted, each of you is allotted two more minutes. So do you wanna start, Mr. Newcomb? You've got two minutes to emphasize any points you want to, um, emphasize.
Just been glad to do this job for 16 years, but, uh, I will thank you all for coming. Thank everybody for watching. And just get out and vote on, in June, I guess. You three gentlemen will have the big race in June, uh, then, then I have.
July 19th.
July, July 19th and, excuse me, July, and then you gentlemen. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Satterfield.
If you were paying attention this evening, I have shuffled through answers that I've worked on and worked on, um, for the last few days. The one thing that I did not do was a closing statement for two minutes. And the reason I did that is because my feeling is to speak from the heart. My mother is sitting in, in the room and I think she would tell me, or she would at least agree with me. Growing up, my father made attempts to teach me a lot of things. And it wasn't until I was much older before I realized that most everything he taught me or tried to was right on the money. The one thing he shared with me that I will share with you. You enter this world with one thing and you depart with one thing. You can have all of the material things, all of the money, cars and property, anything you want to say. But you come in with your name and you leave with your name. And how you're remembered is how you treat other people and the roles that you involve yourself in through life. I've been fortunate to have two really great careers. I don't like to not do something. I think my wife, who's also here, will tell you that she's rare, rarely ever left me a honeydew list cuz I'm always fiddling with something to try and get done beforehand. I take things seriously. I have raised my hand and taken an oath many, many times in my life. I don't believe that when you raise your hand, you become all-knowing. You have to ask questions. You have to seek out help from others so that we are all successful. That is what I believe. And I think that the citizens of District One and all of Dorchester County deserve someone who's willing to say, I don't know, but I'll find out for you. And get that answer back to you in a reasonable amount of time. Thank you.
Well, first of all, make sure you get out and vote regardless of who you vote for. Make sure you get out and vote cuz your vote does count. As far as myself is concerned, uh, some have asked me, why do I still keep going and so forth? Well, I've worked hard my whole life and active, as I've stated earlier, without going into detail again, with the community and helping my neighbors and so forth. That's my makeup. I cannot become, with all due respect, a couch potato. I'm semi-retard. I'm not retard. I pick and choose what I wanna do and when I wanna do it. Sometimes it seems a little bit more than what I want because right now I wanna get out on my boat, but I haven't been able to. But I have the time and energy and wellness and love for this county as well as, as this country, far as that goes. And I'm here to serve and I'm available 24/7. I've always looked out not only just for South Dorchester, but for North and everything in between. Uh, I've always looked out, not only just for South Dorchester, but for Dortheb and everything in between. You can always reach me. My phone stays on 24/7, right on side of bed. So that being, being said, uh, I would appreciate your support. I may not be the most qualified, but I think I'm more qualified with my background and willingness and business experience to do this job. Thank you.
Um, I totally understand that, yes, I'm the new kid on the block here. Basically, I'm not going to reiterate on my experience or anything other than, yes, I do have the county's interests at heart and I will do the best possible job I can do. Other than that, get out and vote next month. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thanks to all of you for some incredibly thoughtful responses to our questions.